The August. Welcome to the August second meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of New Canaan. Just a couple of housekeeping items so that you know how the process works. When we call your case, we're going to ask each presenter to please state their name for the record as you just heard the meeting is being recorded. We ask you to again identify yourself, state your request, please be sure and identify your hardship hardship is unique to your property and runs with the land. It's not financial in nature or a want. Board will then ask questions of you. After which time we'll sit down, we'd ask you to step aside for a moment while we ask people either for or against the application to speak, we'll give you a chance to respond to any questions or issues that they raise. And then some any last minute thoughts at which point the board will go into a business session during the business session, we can't take any more input from anybody. So that you know there are five voting members on the board, we have five tonight. And it takes four affirmative votes for your variance to be granted. So before we get started, Lynn, I'd ask you to call roll.
Okay, Laura Edmonds is absent tonight, John Mahoney.
Present.
Jessica Cardone. Luke Toshian.
Present.
Becky Walsh is absent tonight, Richard Carr too.
Present.
Cynthia Doll.
Present.
Terrific. Well, the first thing I would ask is for a motion from one of the members of the board to change the agenda. My understanding is that the Park Place application has something brief they would want to say, and then we'll move on. So could I have a motion from the board to change to swap places on the agenda with Park Place going first?
My motion, Rich Carr two motions.
Second, please.
You doll seconds.
Thank you. With that, I understand that well, let me read.
Mr. Chair, you need to take a vote for the motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lynn. As you can tell, I don't always do this. Lynn, or let's say Luke, would you like to start the voting, please?
To change the order, the motion is to change the order.
Motion is to change the order.
Tashin in favor.
Jessica.
Cardon in favor.
Cynthia.
Doll in favor.
And Richard.
Rich Carr two in favor.
And Mahoney in favor. Okay, so with that, we'll start with twenty seven Park Place zoning variance upon the application of Jacqueline Kaufman. Carmody Torrance Sandec and Hennessy LLP authorized agent for Rebecca Harris and Eric Schmelz owners for a variance of section three point six point D point four and six point nine point B point one to allow the driveway clearance width on the property to be eleven point one feet in lieu of the fourteen feet required for a property in the B residence zone. Map K block one thirty seven lot H fifty six.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jackie Kaufman. I represent Eric Schmelz and Rebecca Harris, who are both here with us tonight. And I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words first. We received a letter of dissent from a neighbor today. We'd like the opportunity to to address that. It was only received in the the early afternoon. And there wasn't enough time today to be able to properly address it rather than do that publicly with you all. We thought it'd be more appropriate to address that with them privately. So we look forward to doing that and continuing this matter to your next available meeting, which I believe is September thirteenth. And to the extent when staff and I calculate that we will be happy to provide any extension days as necessary.
Terrific. I guess we're going to need a letter requesting the extension from you. Can you coordinate that with Lynn?
Yes, certainly. That's what we'll do. I don't, we will, we will extend it only for the number of days certain that we need so we can reserve the other days if needed in the future for other voting.
Terrific. Thank you. So Lynn, we've opened the meeting and continued it, I guess. Do we need to vote on that? Or are we good at this point with the the request of the applicant?
We should be good. If the board is good, we should be good to continue.
Okay, so if the board is good, do we have to vote on it, Lynn, or are we all right?
We are, we are all right.
Okay, thank you. Luke, were you gonna ask something?
Yes, I was just gonna ask if when these for the next year and can they submit the plans as PDFs at least uploaded? It's just the PowerPoint and it comes out really hard for me to read.
Yes, we'd be happy to do so. I think we did that when we filed, but I'm sure you just got that PowerPoint in to look at. So be happy to get you the PDF plans.
But yeah, the PDF should be up on the website, but it's one large PDF. So you just go through, it's all all paid at once.
Let me double check that because I was just looking on the website and didn't see it. I just saw this in the Saturday and I didn't see it either. Under the twenty six parking variance, the first one. Oh, I see it. Okay, after you scroll down there to the application. Okay, okay, I don't need that then. I guess there's there as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to Sixth Ledge Avenue zoning variance upon the application of Lance E Zimmerman. Authorized agent for Alexandra and Jeremy Thompson. Owners for a variance of sections three point five point F point five to allow for a proposed addition to exceed the maximum side yard height for property in the B residence zone. Map S block seventy nine block six eighteen. The floor is yours.
Good evening. This is Lance Zimmerman and I'm representing Ally and Jeremy Thompson, Sixth Ledge Avenue in their request for a variance of section three point five point F point five maximum side yard height in a B residence zone. The midpoint of a roof in a that from eight feet to sixteen feet is supposed to be no more than twenty feet maximum. The total height is supposed to be twenty five feet total maximum. We have an existing house that is a one and a half story and we're looking at making a two and a half story. So, okay, she's got my drawings up there. It's um, the lot or the house is built existing very, very close to the lot lines. It is actually nonconforming from Sixth Ledge Avenue. And it's a, it's a corner lot. It's on Route one twenty three Ledge Avenue. So there are two fronts and two side yards, which also, you know, has it makes it more of a problem that there are two side yards. I think the biggest hardship is just exactly where the house is located and that it is already nonconforming. The second floor, what we're proposing is to just literally build over the first floor. And then we would do a one and a half story addition on the Route one twenty three side. The existing house has two bedrooms on the first floor right now. Those bedrooms will become kitchen and entrance way. And all the bedrooms will be moved to the second floor along with a future attic bedroom, but that would just be one. The the height is on the side that is I guess to me is the south side, hard to tell on this because it's turned completely. You know, it's almost straight up and down. It'd probably be southwest. But that portion is ten and a half feet, the house itself from the our the property line. So we would have to be five point five feet into the existing footprint and change that. And in reality, the the drawings, the twenty five foot height, we actually meet that where the sixteen foot height or the sixteen foot setback hits the roof. We hit the twenty five feet basically right at that point. However, we can't meet the twenty foot midpoint. That's just literally just below the eve on that side. But that portion that is says Ernst and Jean Bothwell that it was right next to that. That's a thirty foot wide driveway area that nobody can build on. It's 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 open in perpetuity because it's subject to rights of others that have the right to drive on that. And that's right in this area right here. This entire piece is thirty feet wide. So the houses that the Bothwells own are over here sixteen feet away from these lot lines. And so they're really not affected by what we're proposing here at all. This house is further forward, but they're they're really close to the property line. They're five feet away, which very close. But it's still on the back portion right here. We only need a one foot variance. We're fifteen feet at this corner, fifteen point one at this corner. So there's one foot right in this area that would be required to be a twenty foot maximum for the midpoint, twenty five feet total height. And we did do hip roofs all the way around to help litigate the the height. So kept that down by doing the hip roofs. We don't have a gable standing up on that end. So there's much less shadow that would be cast anywhere. On the southern side, the porch porch would remain. That's nonconforming. But that also breaks down the scale of the house from the side, from the porch already being there. And the same with the front. And then the one and a half story on this side, you know, breaks that down very nicely. So again, I I think that the hardship is the actual location of the house. And that I believe that it would be very detrimental to the design if we had to come back in here five and a half feet and lower this down. I mean, we literally have to lose pretty much the second floor. We could maybe do a little gable, but it would really destroy kind of the front. The front is very symmetrical. You know, the existing house is there. I think it's a nice looking house. You know, of course I designed it so you know that would have a little bit of but it it looks nice this way. If we have to cut away five and a half feet on the right hand side here and make that lower and meet the the regulation. I think it'd be very detrimental to the design and to the, you know, the homeowner's use of the property. So I thank you for your time and I you know, any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer them and the best I can.
Lance, this is John Mahoney. Could I ask you to do to direct Lynn to elevation that that has the issues that you're seeking the variance for? I'm having a little bit of a hard time.
Well, this is, you're looking at it right now.
Okay.
That is the southern elevation. That's the one where it would have to be five and a half feet back right along here.
I'm sorry, when you're saying, Lynn, could you give him?
Wait, you only only I can use the cursor on the screen, so.
So Lance, if you if you could help guide Lynn, it would be helpful to me to just understand, and I don't know whether it's better to do the front elevation so that we can see.
Well, we can do the front too, but let's, as long as this one's up.
Okay.
If you look at the right hand side of this.
Yeah.
That is the portion where we would be sixteen feet or fifteen feet away from the lot line instead of sixteen feet. So literally one foot of the right hand side of this would need to be pushed in or redesigned in some manner that I think would be again detrimental to the design for one foot. You know, that that to me is a very minor ask for one foot there. The if you go back to the front elevation, the right hand side of this, the the sixteen feet would be five and a half feet in from this where you see the stone wall down below, it would be five and a half feet in from the right hand side. So again, and it's also, that's also the long elevation. So it's it's not easy to do like a gable that we could lower because it's a, it's the long elevation. So you know, if you go back to the piece on the bottom, that's it's the longer elevation. Which is really difficult to do a gable which would, you know, allow us to mitigate this. And we also have two sides adjacent to each other rather than, you know, a front and a rear and then two sides opposite each other. Which also makes it more difficult to, you know, meet the regulations. So I don't know if that helps you, John.
Um. For the moment it does. Questions from the rest of the board?
So it's a seven foot Luke Tashen speaking, so it's a seven foot difference in mid roof height approximately. Asking the variance for.
Approximately, yes.
The total height is okay, but it's the mid roof height?
Well, we would actually meet the twenty five feet right where the sixteen foot hits the roof. You know, if you if you projected the sixteen foot setback into the house and put it straight up where it hits the roof, we basically are at twenty five feet. So it would be a midpoint that we can't make. The twenty foot is literally right at the eve on this side. So the twenty foot height from the average grade on this side is literally right at the eve.
But the total height, I understand that the mid roof issue that that's I guess you're discussing. But my question about how you'd have to somehow chop out a corner of that roof. But that's the mid roof height. What about the total? Because there's two measurements, ones and we have this mid roof height come up a lot. But the total building height, we don't, I mean, I can't remember, it's given a variance on total building height before. Is that one issue here?
We actually, we meet the total building height with what we're proposing here. At thirty five feet is allowed.
Okay.
In this zone for the total building height, but not for the side yard total hut, you know, or maximum height. So that's what we're up against here is a side yard maximum height, not not the total building height itself. We are allowed thirty five feet total building height and we are at thirty five feet from average grade. I was looking at trying to raise grade some, but the the southern side, the side you're looking at, has that drive area that is subject to rights of others. So I really can't even change that, you know, it's really hard to change grade in that area. I could do a little bit toward the the rear on the right hand side here. But I, it's really hard to change the grade in this property because of how close it is to other people's properties. So.
So I'm just trying to follow the languaging application. It might just be because you're trying to fit it on like three little lines, but since south side six feet of proposed addition required to be twenty feet in twenty five feet proposed building height to be twenty seven feet, seven inches in lieu of twenty feet. So that you're seeking the variance in the side yard, that mid roof height from twenty feet to twenty seven, seven feet.
Right. Well, the, no, that, yes, that's the mid roof is the twenty seven, seven. Yes.
And it says, and total height will be thirty four feet, eight and a quarter inches in lieu of the twenty five feet required.
Well, but the total height, that total height is for the building, the whole building. I mean, I you'd have, I mean, I'd have to cut a piece of the five point five feet of the side away from this. Which, you know, really doesn't work.
But is the total height of a building in that area twenty five feet?
No, the total height is thirty five allowed.
So what's the total twenty five height, twenty five you have listed? That's where my question's coming from.
That is for the side yard. The, what is it here? It's called the maximum side yard height, which is from eight feet to sixteen feet. And the existing house is ten and a half feet from the side yard. So we're already starting, you know, in basically two feet away from the eight foot.
So within the side yard setback, you're limited to twenty five feet outside the side yard setback, you're limited to thirty five feet.
Right. And it's not Luke really within the setback, it's feet from the setback, I think.
Right.
So you have the setback and then you have the an additional basically ten feet where this height restriction comes into play.
Yeah, I mean, that's really what it comes down to. We're, we've got five point five feet that we would have to try and make hit the twenty foot midpoint and the twenty five foot total for that five point five feet. And that's really difficult to do on a house that is already existing. And we would like to put the second floor on. It's very difficult. It would look, and I think it would look really I'm gonna say odd. I mean, I don't think there's any other way of putting it. I think it would look odd.
It's rich Carr too. You would just want to get our arms around the hardship. So how difficult will it be and why do you think it's difficult? That's the.
It's the, it's because of where the existing house is located. The existing house is very close to the property lines already. That, you know, if if we were starting new, we would move this house over and we would have no issues with it at all. But we're not. We're starting with a first floor footprint that is on this side, ten and a half feet from the property line. And the porch is actually encroaching into the setback existing. So we are supposed to now in that sixteen feet from eight to sixteen feet, we're supposed to keep it at twenty feet to the midpoint, twenty five feet total height for that.
Right.
Five and a half feet. And it really would, it would destroy the design. I mean, there's absolutely no doubt about that. And I just put it out that way. So and it's because of where the existing house is, not for any other reason. That's the hardship. The existing house too close to the, you know, basically very close to the lot lines. But it's also not some, I mean, this was built in nineteen twenty six. And even though my clients physically just bought it, they have lived there for twenty, not, you know, since two thousand and eight. And their parents bought it in nineteen ninety three. So it's, it's not like all of a sudden they bought it and created a hardship, the hardship, you know, they would, they're wanting to expand it now. And that's why they finally bought it from their parents. But, you know, it is one of these where they've been there a long time. And it's an old house and it's a nice old house. And I think it looks nice with the addition on it.
Oh, Luke Tashen speaking. So for the variance, you need a hardship that runs with the land and normally the hardships, we look at like topography, obviously, you know, if there's ledge, things like that. Here it's a little unique in that it's the location of the house, you know, I know, you know, as opposed to if the lot, you know, what was had a steep grade or something like that.
Right. Well, it is, yeah, it is the location of the existing house on the property. So.
So the underlying test though is, is there, you know, absent the variance and practical confiscation of the lot, like is your client denied reasonable use of it without the variance? So the question becomes if they live there since nineteen eighty eight with the out of variance, how can the lot not be reasonably used without it? Seems like it could be used. Seems like someone could live there.
They live there. Well, they've got, they've got three children and they're, you know, or four children actually, and they're you know, they need the the bedrooms now. The boys have gotten older. That's really what it comes down to. So.
This is just a card.
But that's a personal hardship then.
Well, yes, that is, but I think the location of the house is still the hardship and it's a non, it's an existing nonconforming house.
I'm saying, how does that deprive them of reasonable use of it though? Maybe that's Jessica's follow up question, but that was kind of my question. Then the personal hardship doesn't seem to really.
Well, you, you can't, you can't add a second floor unless you pull back five point five feet from the right hand side when you face the front.
This is Jessica Cardon. That's what I'm not understanding because it looks to me on the plans that you've added a second floor and then there's this upper level that appears to be, you know, still adding another bedroom. So I guess I'm challenged as to how, right now, to me, it looks like there's three floors. Or maybe it's two and a half.
Well, it's an attic. It's a, it's a two and a half, which is allowed.
I'm not saying it's not, but I think when you keep saying that you can't get the second floor. Otherwise, I'm trying to understand how you have a second floor and an attic in the plan. If you were to remove the attic and change the design, see right now there, you could change the design and you wouldn't have a hardship. I think that's what we're all grappling with is there isn't a hardship running with the land that supports a variance for the ideal aesthetic design that your clients are desiring and that you've created, which I'm not challenging as being anything but truly aesthetic. It looks great, but we have to be able to justify with a hardship that runs the land the proposed design and why there is a need for the variance based on the actual property.
Well, because the house is existing built too close to the to the property lines.
But there would be other designs. That's the point.
They don't want them. They don't.
Be able to add other.
They don't want a modern design here, which is what happens if you take five point five feet away from the right hand side and lower that down. And we're having to lower that down because of where the existing house is. It has nothing to do with anything else other than where the existing house is. And that it to me is hardship and it's a, it's a beautiful old stone house. And it, the second floor just sits right over the first. We're not trying to encroach any further into the setback. We're not asking for any more, you know, setback. When this house was built, you're the regulation that has the side yard maximum heights was nowhere in sight. And actually, there was probably no zoning at all when this house was built. And if you, I mean, you look at the back, they must have owned the lot next to it also because of the continuation of the stonework and things that go right on into the neighbor's property behind them. But it is, the hardship is there based on the fact that the house exists. And I mean, if you've got to move it over five point five feet and create this basically it'd be a funny look. It would really, it'd be, the most we could do would be a salt box. Which does not lend itself to this house at all. And I think in, you know, putting the hip roofs on it, that keeps the, you know, the height down, which is really what we're is you're trying to do with your regulations.
Well, Tashen speaking, what I'm, the question is though is how is putting another story and a half on this? How is being unable to put a story and a half on this deprive?
Right now, it's a story. Right now, it's one and a half story. So we're just literally putting a second floor on and lifting the existing half floor up. So it is one story that we're adding to this because it is an existing one and a half story house. And it actually has basically the same dormers that we're showing there also on the existing plans.
This is Jessica Carter. I feel like you answered kind of my question though, because you basically said you could actually do a different design like a salt box and you wouldn't need the variance. And that's.
Yeah, that doesn't, it doesn't match this house. It doesn't go with this house.
That's, we don't always get to choose what the house looks like based on the lot and how we're able to use the lot. Some people have to have different plans and what they want or have to change the portico, other things. We're trying to come up with the reason based on the town and the state laws and requirements that would show why there is a hardship that runs with this land that would justify this design. And from what you've said, there are other alternatives as far as.
Well, there really aren't. We, we, we've tried them. We've tried other designs. It just doesn't really work. But, you know, that I'm. You know, that I'm. It, I think the hardship is exactly what I've said. The house, where the house is located.
Okay, rich carrot two. Why don't the other designs work in your opinion?
They don't look great. They're, it, you know, they are just completely. Odd looking from the front of this house. The front of this house is basically symmetrical. And the only way it's gonna work is if we drop down the right-hand side. And. It, it would have to drop down significantly. Like almost right down to the first floor. To make this work, you know, they basically lose. You know, the years, the second floor. Uh, it's, um.
Okay.
I, it really is. It re- symmetrically and how this house looks. It's based on where the house is located on the lot. So the lot is, it's a non-conforming house right now.
And when, when you say it's non-conforming, it's non-conforming because the porch is in the setback or?
Well, the front, the front of the house. The front of the house is also in the set, is completely in the setback, not just porch. It's supposed to be twenty five feet. And it is nineteen something. So the front of the house is non-conforming. You can see where the setback line goes right through the house.
A lot of it, Luke Tash being, a lot of times when people come in front of us. They. Come in front with a proposal that says, you know, we're making it more conforming here and less conforming there. And then.
We did pull back the, the side. Where we are adding the one and a half story, we pulled it back behind the front yard setback. So we didn't have any other. You know, we're not looking for. Side setback variance. We're not looking for a height variance. You know, it's all of these things meet the code, other than the fact that it is a non-conforming house.
But after, I'm saying, after, if you look at it on the northwesterly side on the plan. Is, so you're saying that after the addition, that's gonna be within the setback? The front yard setback can be twenty five feet from the road or is it staying on the same footprint there?
Sitting on the same footprint. That, that actually is allowed by. Uh, new Canaan zoning.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if you have a non-conforming structure and you're making it more conforming. That can at least arguably be grounds to grant a variance. And I was thinking.
And that, that.
Conforming that. We're just trying to find a reason here because so far, you know, we need, we need some, we need a basis on which to grant it within the. Confines of our limited jurisdiction.
Oh, the fact that it's a non-conforming house. And the non-conformity, it, I mean, if this was built now. You know, you turn it the other direction and put it inside the setbacks. But it is non-conform. And that's the hardship. It's a non-conforming house. Non-conforming is to your existing zoning.
It's non-conforming as to the. It's not, not conforming as the mid roof, you're making, becoming more non-conforming.
Right. I, I think the non-conformity. That allows you, if God forbid, there was a fire, to rebuild what you currently have. The non-conformity doesn't give you the right necessarily to expand the non-conformity in some way, expanding further the non-conformity. So that's what we're struggling with here. I think my fellow members are struggling with, and I am as well. Is, I, um. What really is the hardship? I mean, the hard, just because you have a property. That sits in the setback doesn't. You know, and that, that zoning has changed over thirty years doesn't give. You the ability to ignore zoning and revert back to. Nineteen thirty or whenever the house is built. I'm sorry, it's been sitting, you know, it's been there more than thirty years. So we're, you know, we're struggling to, we're, we're actually. May not. Seem it, but we're trying to find a way to help you here.
Is this house, Luke Tash, I mean, is this house like historical significance or anything?
I don't know if it is. I mean, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's an interesting house. Built in nineteen twenty six. Um. You know, the stonework on it is, um. It, it's amazing. And, uh. You know, it just, um.
Luke Tash is speaking. We had this come up with one before, and I think I asked this question, one of the attorneys on, answered it. Might have been Joe Rucci, someone who really knew the zoning well, answered this question, and I just don't remember the answer, but, um. You can't use a variance to increase your setback, can you? So for instance, he couldn't go get a. A variance over that right away that says, you know. He can use it for a setback and then count that in his setback. He has to actually own the land. Maybe Lynn knows the answer.
Wait, what's your question, Luke?
My question is if, I think I asked this before, and I think the answer was no is what I'm saying, but. I, I was, if, if he got a variance over Porsche, I mean, an easement over port, a portion of that right away. Could he then count that from the, that, that still wouldn't help with this issue, would it?
Yes, okay, uh, but the set, the side yard setback is from the property line, so.
Not from like an easement line, if you had an easement.
No, but isn't, isn't the prop? I'm sorry, is the property line all the way? Across where that driveway is, Lynn? Um, the, the area that, that has been, um. Highlight is subject to the right of others. Is that, is that area part of the property?
Um, that looks like an access way.
Yeah, well, it's certainly an easement over the land. I, it, it would appear, but is that part of the actual property?
I don't.
Mr. Zimmerman, do you, do you whether the property goes all the way across that access easement?
I don't think so. Um. I mean, based on. You know, RKW's survey. Yeah, I mean, it just basically says that that thirty feet is subject to the rights of others. Um, and. It actually, you know. Now or formerly Ernest Bothwell, those are the, the lots that are. Um, that, that little squiggle right there, I, I don't know if that means that that is actually part of their property. Um, I'm not a surveyor, so I don't know what that little squiggle means.
I'm, I'm just con- confused by the line on the north side that appears to run all the way to the adjacent property.
Yeah, well, it's, um.
This line right here?
That line right there, Lynn.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to pull the deeds, but it, I mean, we did see a case, um, a while ago where someone actually had an easement and they, um. Owned a piece of someone else's property. That they came to you, but, uh. Uh, and I think that's what, um, Mr. Toshin is referencing, but, um, the side yard has to be counted. It's, um, it's. From the property line. And, and in the B zone, it would be between eight and sixteen feet in.
The, the maximum side yard height, yes. That's the, what we're here for the variance for.
Lynn, do you have a full-sized, um. Plan so you can measure the distance along that line, along ledge avenue to see if it comes out to ninety nine feet, one inches, if you went all the way along that line?
I, I, it, it's not scaled enough right, right now. It's on the computer, so. We'd have to do it, or we'd have to ask the surveyor to do it, but.
It's rich character. I saw some indication to wetlands on the legend. Are there wetlands on the property?
No.
Okay.
Well. I'm scaling the surveyor's. Um, survey and. It isn't ninety nine feet. It, it goes, it goes beyond that, um, corner, um, the ninety nine feet does. I don't. So I don't know what that. And it's a one to twenty scale and I've got. Ninety nine feet would be. Approximately eight feet. Beyond the, where the N is, where it says N forty three. Thirty four. Ninety nine point one zero feet goes about. Eight feet beyond that.
Well, that's interesting. That, that, uh. Kind of solves.
Just, you know, you know what? I think what it is, is this one isn't to scale. That's, that's the problem. It's not to scale because I just measured the other side too. So now it's gotta be. Let me see if I've got another one here.
Lynn is the deep.
The ninety nine feet is that length, um. Um, so it does not go beyond. The lot line on the corner.
The N?
Right. It, it just, it comes right to where the N is. That's the ninety nine feet, ninety nine point one zero feet. Now, no, they don't. You know. On this survey, they don't own any of that property. I mean, they're. That, that is their driveway, um, but, you know, they have the use of that for their driveway. But that's, um. You know, that's why it's subject to rights of others.
Okay, thank you.
Luke Tash is speaking. So the driveway runs in that easement. Their, their driver runs that easement too?
Yes, it does. Mm-hmm. And that's, I mean, that's one of the reasons. I mean, this really doesn't affect anybody. That's thirty feet wide. There, they can actually park behind the house. Uh, driving down this accessway. So.
Lynn?
Yes.
I, I mean, I mean, not Lynn, Jessica, this really is. Unique in that if you measured it from their driveway. You know, it's not that non-compliant. Anyone looking at it is gonna think it's from the driveway. I, I don't know, I don't know how that gets us past the hardship issue and whether or not you have the ability to create an easement, but it. I mean, it, where their driveway is on the side where this is, and nothing can be built there. Anyone looking at it is gonna think this complies with. The zoning because if you set back another with twelve feet at least for the driveway, fourteen feet or so.
All right, that's a thirty foot wide piece between the property lines there. So it's.
Lynn, what is the record of? Like formerly, you said it hadn't been checked. We don't know. What, how formally it's been documented. It doesn't ease in or right away.
I don't know. Um, all I, all I have is a survey that says it's subject to the rights of others, but I know that it's used. You know, as an access way. So I think it even goes beyond, you know, down to the next properties.
Jessica, I mean, it says see volume, something page. I can't read it on here. Five forty seven to five fifty, I think. I assume there's recorded easement there. That's granted them. I think that's a safe assumption based on this plan.
I was the one that did the Bothwell's houses, so I know that they're not moving those. It's, those are all. Two families that were. Done there quite a while ago.
If you do, if I can time it a little bit, I had the opportunity to. Um, walk the property. I walked around the home, um. Walked on the other side where you're talking about where this easement is. Um, you know, in terms of the placement of the house. Um, it is, I, I wouldn't say that the way that the, the, the land is or the, the plot. Lays, the house is not optimally. Um, placed from that perspective. In terms of listening to some of the conversation as to how you might be able to adjust. The plans. Um, I have to say it's a uniquely designed home. Um, you know, and the stonework, as you mentioned, um, is phenomenal. Um, I. I have to say, I, I would think that if. You did anything in creating something like a, a salt box or whatever, it would dramatically change the look and feel. Of the home that fits there now. Um. The addition that you're adding on and, and based on, you know, um, even though it's close to property lines, there's, there's trees. There's enough space that I can't see that this would have any impact. On. Any of the neighbors. Um, and if you look at the homes that are surrounding it, and I know this doesn't necessarily have anything to do with what we're talking about, but they're a lot taller than this house. It's not like, you know, allowing this to go through is going to, um. I think have any negative effect on, on the neighboring homes. Um. I, I have to say, you know, I know it's a stretch. Um, but. I. I, I personally don't have a problem. Um, with granting variants.
I mean, if you wanted, uh, there, you know, when you go to the left of the house. There's a retaining wall and then there's, it slopes down even further and slopes down toward one twenty three. Um, I mean, if that. Is anything that would be the hardship by, you know, but it, I still think it's based on the fact of where the house is located and. You know, and when it was built, um, you know, and whether pieces got sold off over time, I don't know, but, uh. You know, this is. It, I agree with you that, that. It really, I, and I've looked at how to, um, you know, redesign this without making it look. Odd and it really. Doesn't work. Um, well, I mean, it's, uh. It, it's. You put a gable on that end or, you know, it just, the gable's gotta be down low so to get the twenty feet. And we didn't, you know, we didn't raise the first floor at all, so it's still only eight feet. Second floor is only eight feet. You know, it's not like we're trying to create. You know, a, for any other better word, a McMansion here. It is, uh, I think it's a pretty subtle house. Um, and I think it works well in the, in the neighborhood. Now.
Mr. Zimmerman, this is John Mahoney again. Just, I, I'm, I have on my screen up the. Um. The survey again. I wanna be sure I understand. There was one dimension that was only one foot off. Is that the southwest dimension or the northwest dimension?
Um, that would be. The, it's just opposite the front, so it's the. I guess it would, I guess it would be the southwest, I think. Um.
Along where the driveway is, right?
Yes, it's where the driveway is in the back over there. Yes, that's exactly right. That is the one foot. One that's fifteen right now and it's supposed to be, you know, it's sixteen feet. We're suppo- or between fifteen and sixteen, we're supposed to. Have a one foot. That. Would be twenty feet and twenty five feet. Um.
Okay, so that, that's the dimension that's the one foot dimension. The one that is the, I think you said five foot dimension. Is that where it shows the porch along ledge avenue?
Uh, no, it's the porch along the, uh, subject to right away of others. That's the, that's the side. The, the porch on ledge is the front of the house. Um.
Okay, and we don't, we don't have an issue there.
No. And we made sure we met the setbacks for the new portion of this, the new footprint. Um. And that's a story and a half, so it, you know, blends in nicely, drops down as it comes out towards Route one twenty three. Um. It's, uh, it is this side toward the Bothwells. That, um, you know, would be five point five feet. Into the house that we would have to try to make it twenty feet to the midpoint. And twenty five feet total. And. I mean, in reality, we meet the twenty five feet because at sixteen feet. We are only twenty five feet high except for the dormer. Um, it's just the twenty feet to the midpoint. We don't have that. We are, we're just literally right below the eve on that side. So it's, um. There, there's actually quite a bit of it that conforms, but it's just the. You know, I, and I understand the, you know, the regulations. I've done, you know, new houses in New Canaan and, uh. You know, it's just, this one just doesn't lend itself. To, because of its location, it doesn't lend itself to cutting these pieces down.
Luke Tash is speaking. On the southwesterly side, you have a covered porch and an open porch. What's the difference?
Because the open porch has no roof over it. It's just a stone, kind of stone terrace with a wall around it. The, the covered porch has a roof over it.
And the porch doesn't count towards a setback, Lynn?
The porch does.
Wasn't there some rule where the uncovered porch doesn't count, right? Didn't we have this once before?
Yeah, I don't think the uncovered porch counts, but the covered one does.
And, you know. Depends on how high off the ground it is, I believe.
Right, yeah.
Lynn, so the porch is the southwestly side. That encourages within the setback too, or is that not counted?
Um, it, it. It's in the setback, but it's been there.
I thought there was an exception for porches from the setback.
There's an exception for like stairs to your cellar or stairs to your back area, but it's, the porch itself is in the setback and from. It looks like from the assessor's records. It was built with the house.
Yeah, I think both of them were, the stonework is all the same on both the front porch and the side porch. Stonework is all the same.
So the covered porch on this Luke Tash is speaking, so the covered porch on the southwestly side, that's a stone porch, it's staying the same stones?
Yes, there's, there's stonework down below. And that has the same stone as the house does.
Come on, if. I'm all set, and if anyone asks if you wanna see if anyone's for or against this.
Yeah, well, that's where I was going next. Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman, is there anybody in the audience? Wanting to speak in favor of the application? Lynn?
Mr. Mahoney, sorry, there, it, the big question is. Jill B., are you here to speak on this application? I'm sorry, did you say you're not?
I am not, I can't, I can't. I attended this meeting to speak about twenty-seven park place. But that has been adjourned.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I didn't realize.
Okay. And therefore we have nobody against either, Lynn?
I agree, yes, just let me just confirm, Eileen Salz, are you also here to speak on twenty-seven park place, or are you here to speak on Sixth Ledge?
There you go. Want to ask again, Lynn?
Eileen Salz, are you just, are you here to speak on Sixth Ledge Avenue or to speak about twenty-seven park place? I believe that, I believe that's the neighbor of Park Place.
I believe so too.
So, I want any audience to speak either for or against Sixth Ledge Avenue.
Okay, thank you, members of the board, before we go into the business session, are there any more questions? Any further discussion? Because once we go in, we won't be able to entertain information from. The audience or the applicant. All right, Mr. Zimmerman, any, anything else you'd like to add before we go into the business session?
Well, I, I know myself and my clients would very much appreciate if you could find yourself. Granting this variance, I think it would be a very nice looking house, don't think that anybody. Is going to look at this house and go, how did they possibly let that go through? So that's, I mean, that's all I've really got to say, and. You know, my, my clients would very much appreciate anything that you can do, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I get any objection to us going into the. Business session? All right, having no objection, how about further discussion? Jessica, Cynthia, Rich, Luke, any further discussion, or is there a motion?
This is Rich, I could. I, I, I could almost, I could get there on, on. The location of the house, the easement of the driveway. The style of the house, maybe not practical to do much else, given the style of the house. Without that being an undue hardship. It's an attractive looking house. And. You know, it is placed in, 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 in not the optimal position on the lot, you know, some sixty, seventy years ago, so. I'd be inclined to. To see my way toward the hardship, very borderline, but I could be inclined to see my way.
This is Jessica Carden, I, I'm still not really convinced, because I think there are. Design alternatives, even if they aren't aesthetically what they might prefer. And. Those options aren't necessarily precluded, when you look at the forefront. Of the current existing house, based on the easement or other issues with the lot, so just so that you know where I stand.
Oh, good question, so without the driveway easement to the southwest. It seems like a pretty clear. Case to me not to grant it. The fact that that driveway easement on the southwest from a practical effect. Even maybe, essentially from a legal effect too, because nothing can be built there, it does have the space, the southwest, that, you know, in the open air, you know, you, you avoid the looming effect that this mid roof height is supposed to comply with. If you didn't have it, you could theoretically have another house, you know, eight or eight feet or ten feet or whatever from that. Southwestly line, and you know, you, you have a loom factor and shade and things like that between the two houses, and I do think. That because there's that easement there, it does keep that open, I think what adds to that in my mind is that. Their driveways are also on that easement, so someone looking at it is gonna think their lot line extends past that easement. Past a legal line to at least include where the driveway is, so. I, I think that's a. Very unique factor here, and I think it alleviates. A lot of the grounds why. We have this mid roof height, at least based on, you know, prior discussions we've had about why it exists, because mid roof height comes up with frequency here. There are issues on topography, they can't really move the house to. The northeast because of that retaining wall, the lot's slant sloping down, so you could say, okay, put it on a truck and move it a little, but that's possible, gonna be an economic hardship there, but. That's possible, but it's not a flat lot, so that might not be a case. The. I don't know if the house is historic in character. As a historic structure per se, but it has unique stonework on it, the problem, that wouldn't be replicated today. And they're preserving that stonework, so that's another fact that leans in favor. They're not making this house modern, making it larger, but. The character that it seems like that attracts people to this house, this nineteen-twenty stonework is staying, and I know. At least as opposed to historic character, that's a factor we can consider, I don't know if. This is historic per se, but it, it does seem significant to me in that. Allowing them to do this preserves the stonework, because the other option from a practical standpoint that I see. Is this house gonna get knocked down, and they're gonna just build a new house five feet over? And, and what do we really gain from that, especially in light of the easement to the southwest? So while normally, I guess I'm. Considered. Scrooge on the board. I, I think this is very close, but I do think that driveway to the southwest is a unique enough factor to me that I'd be in favor of it. Assuming they have legal rights over, over that easement, and assuming that, you know, they maintain their driveway in that easement, I think I'd condition. The approval on their driveway remaining in that easement. So that people do think, you know, their house is sitting back from the line where it actually legally exists, but I think. Besides that, I'd. I'd be in favor of it, as long as they preserve the stonework and keep the driveway to the. Southwesterly side of it within the easement.
Luke, what? I mean, I, I. I hear exactly what you're saying, and I think that the easement to the southwest. That serves not only this property, but the properties further down from it. Is an unusual factor. I agree with. Richard about it being really right on the edge here, but what is it about the driveway loop that? Being on the southeast that, that, or southwest that is important to you?
Because then someone looking at the property is gonna think the line for is past where it is. So it doesn't look like to someone who's just looking at this, who's not familiar with the plans, they're not gonna think necessarily, well, this house line is only. This property line's only eight feet from the house. Someone looking at it is gonna think, the driver is there, they're gonna think, well, you know, the line's on the other side of the driveway.
Right.
And, and, and I also do think it's important keeping a driver on the southwest side, because. Then obviously there's not gonna be anything else put in that area besides the driveway, which again, I think adds to the fact that it minimizes. The grounds for this mid roof height, which is, you know, preventing loom and making sure there's open space and air and things like that between houses. I, I, if there was a. If that easement wasn't there, I think it's a clear case to me that, that I would not be in favor of this. But I, in, in the fact that it's their own driver on the easement, it's not an easement serving houses behind them is another significant thing, because if it was just the easement serving like a subdivision or something behind the house again. You don't know what's gonna happen with that in the future, and it doesn't look like it's necessarily part of this property, but I do think here. I, I do think here it's a very unique factor, and you do have that retaining wall running straight across the property, so I don't know how practical it'd be. To move a house like this, especially, you know, you're not moving stonework, and, and it's a shame if, you know, nineteen-twenty stonework is, is lost from a historical. Standpoint, so. I don't. I don't, I don't see why in this context we wouldn't want this, the question is, is can we grant it, and I think we can, I do think, you know, if there was people against us as neighbors, I don't know if I'd be as willing based on these factors either, but. There's no one against it, there is a topography, topographical issue on that lot, there's unique historical characteristics of this house that are being preserved. And there's that easement. So.
Do we have a motion?
I would move on those grounds. He has to get four people on it, so in favor, I believe, so I guess it likely be a close vote, but. I'd make a motion to allow it. On the grounds of the driveway remains to the southwest of the house on that easement. And that the stonework be preserved. And I'd base the. The grounds for the variance on the topography to the north. Northeastly side of the lot, in the retaining wall, making, building a house in that area, or moving this house, not practical, the historic nature of the property is being preserved. And the fact that the purpose of this mid roof setback and preventing loom and things like that. Is not, would not be necessarily further here by having the house moved back, because you have a, a broad swath of land between. This property and, and the next property where something on it. Could in the future. Be built. So that's my motion.
Yeah, I, I, I would vote for that same motion, Rich carried it.
So you're seconding the motion?
I am, I am seconding the motion.
Okay. Cynthia, would you like to start the voting?
Yes, I would, Cynthia Doe, I'm in favor of granting the variance as specified by Luke's motion.
Rich?
It's Rich carried to, I am in favor of granting the motion as specified.
Jessica?
Heard and opposed?
Uh, Luke?
Tash in favor?
And Mahoney in favor. So your variance is granted. Congratulations, this was about as tight as it gets, but we hope you have a lot, you know. Another couple of generations enjoyment of the house.
Thank you very much, everybody, thank you very much.
So, everybody, next thing we have to do is review the minutes from our last meeting, which was actually in June. Does anybody have any comments? Suggested changes?
Are those minutes, Natasha speaking, are those minutes in email?
The minutes would have been posted online.
Because I'm looking for them, and I'm not.
If you go to the calendar on the front page of the New Canaan website, so newcanaan.info. First item on the calendar is the zoning board of appeals, there's a link to the agenda, the June seventh draft minutes, the planners memo, the applications, and a link to join this meeting.
I was looking at the applications, let me go back to the calendar.
Lynn, while, while Luke is finding that, says members absent, Ben was listed, was he already? And he resigned from the board by this meeting, or was he still?
I'll have to double check, technically, even though he resigned, he serves until someone replaces him, so I'll, I'll double check. We can remove his name.
And then the, the other question I had was on item number two. Where it said the board had a group discussion with Pete Gelderman, Amy Sutins. And I forget. Neave's first name. But should we list that they're the attorneys for the board, Marquados and Grace Farms?
We can add.
You know, otherwise I don't know why that would be relevant to list.
These group. These minutes seem awful. Lacking to me in substance, I mean, it just says for one seventeen Weed Street. Group discussion between boards and applicants, doesn't say like what was discussed or grounds of variance or anything, like if someone looks at this in the future. To see what happened here in this variance, they're not gonna be able to tell anything from these minutes. I mean, I, I don't think any of the minutes would be a transcript, but I think they're usually more substantive than this.
We can embellish them, but there's a Zoom, there's a Zoom recording, and if it were used in an appeal case, we'd have to produce a transcript, so the minutes would just be supplementary.
But what, Lynn, what about, you know, five years from now or something, you know, after this appeal period passed, or even a year from now, if someone wants to see what was discussed at it?
We, we can add additional stuff to the minutes, it's fine.
You know, I wanna embellish them, embellishment kinda has like negative con- connotations, I just think at least. It would be helpful to do a little more. Detail on these.
We can add more detail, that's fine.
Particularly probably Luke around the hardship.
Honestly, yeah, I think we need to, at least, I mean, we have a judge's decision that says, you know, we need to be clear on when we, why we grant things. We have to be clear in our decisions, and I think that's important, but I do think it's also helpful in our minutes to have, have something here, I don't know if it's legally required. So should we vote to allow these, and just going forward, we decide to. Put more substance in them, I mean, this is from June, so I think maybe we vote on these and allow these, but just at least for tonight and going forward, we try to put more into the minutes.
I would agree with that.
Yes, I, I'd move.
Everybody, everybody else okay with that, or do you need the minutes adjusted further for, for June?
It, it's Rich carried to, I would be okay with, with the minutes, but going forward, we need to be aware of.
I'd move that we allow these minutes. Tash moving.
So, all in favor of approving the minutes for June? Oh, we need a second.
Seconds.
Thank you, Cynthia. All those in favor of?
You need to do a roll call.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
I forget which ones are, are groomed. I'm sorry.
On the Zoom, every vote is a roll call vote.
Okay, thank you very much, uh.
Tash in favor?
Uh, Jessica?
Pardon and favor.
Rich?
Rich Carrington in favor.
Cynthia?
Cynthia Dell in favor.
Uh, Mahoney in favor. Okay. With that, can we adjourn the meeting? Anybody, that I think, do, that I think we can all just say aye to if we want to, unless somebody wants to hang around. Okay?
Thanks.
A- all in favor of, uh, ending the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Thank you all.
Goodnight, everybody.
Thanks for putting up with me.